There's really just, really just one sentence that caught my eye and it calls out the different population centers in forty-nine as Pinecrest, Pierpont, Red Top, Stono Park, Orleans, Orleans, sorry, Edgewater, Crescent, Riverland Terrace, that they did not have public water yet in forty-nine.
Alright, so we're live, we're recording, and Jeremy's getting us set up on YouTube.
Harry, you look like you're in a locked box.
Yeah, really.
I was gonna call it a padded room.
I'm in a glorified phone booth.
Is that, is that one of those escape things, Harry, where you have to pay to escape to get out?
So, I'm in this really interesting development in Charlotte called Camp North End. Chris, have you ever been here? It's this massive industrial site that is being redeveloped, and it's really interesting.
Is it north of downtown, like North Davidson or beyond that?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, it was originally a Ford Motor Company plant in the twenties and thirties.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about.
Anyway, it's interesting.
One of my best friends has a, one of my best friends has a photography studio there, Tent Studios. So you gotta go check it out.
I will check it out. There's a lot of stuff here.
It's a cool place.
Yeah.
Eric, is that near the place where the trolley has been put back in at Charlotte, you know?
No, I was just looking at it.
Yeah, it's a little far out of downtown.
Trolley from South End, so the southern part. Is it along the rail line, the light rail line here?
It's not, but it's a short drive from it.
Cool.
We did, we did a light rail tour this morning.
Awesome.
Are you doing that for your foundation you're working with, or?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at the arts. They have a whole art studio situation here. Residency in, in an old Goodyear tire plant.
Cool.
Wow.
So, anyway, it's interesting.
Well, you won't have to worry about outside distractions in your little room.
In my little fun booth.
Chloe, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Coming through clear, Charlie.
Okay, if y'all are ready, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the City of Charleston Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Carish, I'm the chairman of the commission. And so everyone knows, members of the commission are appointed by Charleston City Council. You're volunteers, and I know you join me in thanking them for their work. For the record, I'll read the members. Chloe, let me ask you, well, I'll read the members who are in the commission, and then you'll let me know who's not, who may not be attending. Mr. Jimmy Bailey, Mr. Aquita Brian Jenkins, Ms. Erica Harrison, Ms. Jonathan Jacobs, Ms. Angie Johnson, Ms. Sunday Lampers, our vice chairman, Mr. Harry Lassane, Mr. Sean Flug, and myself. This is a special meeting, so we'll hear, we'll be talking about the city plan. And again, I wanna go on record, as we've done before, and thank the city planning staff for their many, many hours, weeks, probably months of work on this. This only happens once every ten years. So I know they really worked very hard on this, and we appreciate it. But also like to thank commission members, because we've had one other meeting on this, and we asked commission members, we tabled any motions, or we wanted to bring forward recommendations, so we get it a hundred percent right before we sent to City Council. And I want to thank commission members for their input and feedback on this, so that we can discuss today. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Morgan, get that help, he'll let anyone know, people, members of his staff that will be participating in the meeting tonight, and introduce them. Then we will have the presentation, then we'll have public comment, then we'll close the public aspect of the meeting, and we'll have questions, comments of commission members, and any motions. So, Mr. Morgan, that being said, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so happy to be here, and I think at the culmination of what's been a really long, but very productive process with you all on this comprehensive plan. I, I don't know that, in my, I know in my time with the planning commission, we've never had as intensive a project as this one, working with you all on a document and all like that, so I'm really proud of what we've put together over the last eighteen months or so. And I think it was good to have another couple of weeks to kinda digest some stuff, and let you all throw in some other ideas that you had, and we'll be going over those tonight. And staff with us tonight is, of course, they are the rock stars, they're the ones who have written this plan and done such a great job with it. The, we have Chloe Stubber, Eric Pullman, Jim Hemphill, and Philip Overcash. We also, Marcy's somewhere out there, we are clerk, right, Chloe? She's not on the Hollywood square.
She's gonna catch us on YouTube later, she is double booked tonight, clerking.
Okay, but, yeah, so, you know, unless you all have other things you want to go through, I see Sunday's joining in now too. We were gonna go, gonna go straight to the recommendations, because it seemed like that's where you all had the, the things you wanted to work on, and we will show you where we have brought in the items that you all sent us over the last week, or two weeks, and see what you think about those, and have comment and discussion, and if other things come up, we can certainly discuss other aspects of the plan if you all want to. I know that we also have some comments from the public, and I think typically you all like to hear from speakers and things, and we've got some speakers signed up, so of course we would have that aspect today as well. But I, without further ado, I'm gonna go to screen share here and get to the items, if this is gonna come up. Here we go. Are you all seeing the Charleston City Plan recommendations?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, let me get to my view, and I'll get full screen and just make it a little bit neater. Where is full screen though? There we go. All right, look at that. Okay, so in the first section of the plan, of course, that was the engagement section, and we had some comments, looking down, everything that is new comments or changes is in blue. Hope that showing up is blue for all of you. On number five, we had developed strategies to ensure transparency and accountability for implementation of plan recommendations. And now the addition has added, including a methodology to communicate progress for recommendations put forth in all sections of the city plan. And that might sound a little bit Greek to a lot of folks, but what we see that in the planning department as is giving regular reports to you and the public on how we are working on getting the recommendations of the plan done, and having regular update sessions for prioritization from you all, and, you know, just kind of updates on how we're doing on the whole thing. And then number six was a new one, to continue to research and diversify data sources, to be data smart, thus supporting staff and formulating policy processes and ordinance development. So we've got those. Any comments here? Okay, I'm gonna move on.
Christopher?
Yes, yes.
The things in blue, these are the, the requests made by commission members to be added?
Yes.
Will you, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you get to one that, I mean, are you gonna comment whether or not something gives you heartburn or not?
Yeah, we'll give our thoughts on all of them, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna move on now into natural resources. And in number five, we have create incentives for the use of conservation easements, including developing a toolkit for green space preservation. And then in number seven, we added some more to this, I'll just read the whole recommendation, says continue to promote planning and zoning policies that align with the living with water approach outlined in the Dutch dialogues Charleston study, including encouraging the use of green infrastructure, and we've added in landscaping practices and stormwater management. Green infrastructure includes features such as bioswales, forest pavements, rain gardens, and wetland buffers, and other practices that leave existing natural features and ecosystems undisturbed. So, seems like, makes a lot of sense on our end. So. Comments? Okay. All right, I'm gonna move on, cultural resources. And had a couple in here, under number seven. So the old recommendation, increase the amount of markers and monuments documenting sites and key figures culturally and historically significant to Charleston's African-American and other underrepresented communities, so slight change to that. Then on number ten, conduct a new historic resources survey for all appropriate parts of the city, especially the Upper Peninsula. We'd had another number of organizations commenting on the need for historic resources survey for the Upper Peninsula. And we know that there's some other parts of our historic surveys that we have at the city. Sorry about that, that we have the city that needs some updating as well, but we had specifically called out several organizations, the Upper Peninsula. And then number twelve, reevaluate the feasibility of an archaeological ordinance for the city. And there, you know, that was suggested by one of you all, I think it was Ms. Jacobs, and I know it's been suggested by a number of organizations, and, you know, it's something that could be done, it's just gonna have some costs, and some pretty substantial costs, because the only way we have found through our research around the country to have an archaeological ordinance is to have a onsite, on-time, on payroll archaeologist. And it has the potential to, you know, create an extra hurdle on some redevelopment projects, or taking, you know, some, some buildings that, you know, and sites that may be in need of, of redevelopment, and it does just add an extra step, you know, and that's the thing, we just have to look at the balance. Are we gaining a lot through the extra history we learn about the site and other significant things we find underneath the ground that we might not have known were there, versus, you know, what it takes in time and costs to the city for the archaeological component to be part of our ordinances? So. All right, not seeing anybody stopping me, so I'm gonna move forward. Okay, and economic development, this one has kind of been tweaked a couple of different times, but the way, way number two now reads is dedicate staff and resources, i.e. an office of economic development to create targeted goals for each area of the city, and work with corresponding economic development offices in Charleston, Berkeley Counties, to unify approaches to regional economic development. Clearly, we've been hearing this from a lot of folks, that they would like the city to do more from an economic development standpoint. We do have our existing office of business services, and they also do neighborhood services as well. We were trying to, you know, keep from this plan specifically calling for other positions within the city government. You know, we can study it and all like that, but not trying to be a kind of thirty thousand foot level thing, and not say specifically, oh, we need another position here, and so it's kind of been soft pedal a little bit, but we have heard this from a number of different sources. The number five, pursue policies and programs to support independent locally owned businesses, and allow for competition with larger national chains, including creating programs or incentives for preserving legacy businesses and affordable commercial properties. And this addition, and providing targeted support to navigate the city's licensing and permitting processes. Again, this could be a cost, it could involve some extra staff, but we aren't specifically saying staff. It may be that some things can be moved around, but this was something we heard on several different levels as well. Okay, not seeing anybody raising a hand or anything, good.
I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do this. Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to wait to the end, or, or jump in now, whatever.
I, I think if you have a question, we're gonna get published as placement, if you have a question on any aspect of recommendations, go ahead and ask now, that'd be fine, Mr. Bailey.
Well, I mean, as an example, number twelve, I, I sensed a little hesitancy just based on the possibility of cost, but the way that's written, I don't, that's not a we shall do this kind of statement. That's a look into it kind of statement. Are any of these a definitive we shall? Because if it's just to look at the feasibility of these things, I don't see what's wrong with that.
You know, I agree with you, Mr. Bailey, personally, because I think to reevaluate doesn't mean you're spending money. If the money's there, certainly the city can, can do it, but as you said, that's gonna pertain to if there's dollars to do that. So I agree with, anybody else have any input on that?
Well, and I, and I, I think that we ought to discuss these individually before we vote on them. But I, but I think as a general rule, precisely what y'all are saying, asking the city to evaluate something is, is a different thing than saying, as in number two, dedicate staff and resources to create blah, blah, blah. I mean, I think that's a little more prescriptive sounding to me.
I agree with you. So maybe, go ahead.
Charlie, I think if we're consistent with the wording, so far, we, it's a little bit inconsistent. So I think if perhaps we could just use the same wording when we're just evaluating, or when we're just looking at it, because then it leaves the, kind of open to interpretation if it's worded differently, and people could interpret it differently. So I would just say, not a big change, but just to use the same wording when we're just evaluating or recommending an evaluation.
Makes sense. Anyone else? So, again, I think Harry has a good point, Mr. Bailey has good points, maybe we should, as we go through, if anyone, if any commission member has a question or concern, as we go through, and that probably would be the best way, so. And we can go backwards, but let's go ahead and go forward, and then we can go back to anything we covered. Anything else on, on this one, I, to me, this sounds reasonable, because it doesn't say we shall, or they will implement, just as we'll evaluate it, so. If nothing else, Mr. Morgan, you wanna move forward?
Okay, number eight, relax development requirements such as parking thresholds or licensing for neighborhood scale retail and restaurants. And it's been specified to say in areas designated as city centers, neighborhood edge, and certain neighborhood areas to encourage a mixture of uses in neighborhoods.
Any feedback on that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Fourteen, we had crossed through pursue strategies to promote a diversified economy that provides a variety of jobs, and then replaced it with develop policies, programs, tools, and resources to attract and recruit a racially diverse workforce in the city of Charleston, and to promote an economy that provides a variety of jobs, paying living wages.
Any feedback? I think that's worded a little bit more detailed, and maybe makes sense, so, any other feedback? Not, just to Morgan?
Okay, number sixteen, and we've heard about number sixteen from both planning commissioners and some organizations in town, but establish a task force to update the city's tourism management plan in a manner that will improve livability for Charleston citizens while recognizing the importance and economic impact of tourism.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anyone on, on that item? Makes sense, thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, then back, sorry, under transportation, just one change on number sixteen. Where new pedestrian pathways are being considered, promote policies that encourage wider multi-use paths in areas where the, their existing pathways promote widening where feasible. And I think this stems from the discussion you all had had in planning commission a month or so ago, about a five-foot wide sidewalk, which is currently required, and, and the ability to maybe get that up to eight or ten feet, which really helps to make for the multi-use paths when you get to that width. And currently, our ordinances don't require that except along folly road, but, you know, I think we are certainly supportive of that from a staff standpoint.
Yeah, and we, and we talked about that, and I think Ms. Jacobs had that point, and it made sense where it's feasible. Sometimes there's not land to do it, there's no right of way to do things like that. Anyone input on that item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
My only question to staff is, because I know that, you know, the wording of these things are, is very important. I know Charleston moves at the previous meeting put forth two recommended additions, they said, to the transportation element of the plan. And I was just wondering how that was used in the crafting of number sixteen? Because these things were very wordy, you know, and I just didn't know how the two reflect with each other.
And I'm gonna turn to Chloe, because I know she was doing some editing and pulling some of that together. Chloe, can you help with the response on that?
So what I understood, what Charleston moved shared was, was the statements made, and the public comment was basically sort of copy and paste of statements that were made the last planning commission meeting, and weren't necessarily wording for recommendations. And this wording was, was suggested by Commissioner Bailey in response to those comments made. And other comments made by Charleston moves were, some of those were addressed not in recommendation form, but by making sure that we've referenced the S E D O T directive in the, in the narrative of the plan document, as well as the walk, bike, Berkeley, Charleston, Charleston, Dorchester plan, and the narrative section, or the narrative portion of the transportation element. And so both of those have been added, and are in the most revised, the most recent version available on the city plan website.
Okay, because I, I was looking for that in the most recent plan, and you don't have to do this right now. If you could just tell me the page where those, that narrative was incorporated, I'd greatly appreciate it.
And I, I believe that the language there in sixteen is word for word what I suggested, and I, I think it represents the spirit of what I was trying to accomplish, but would, I have no pride of authorship, and would gladly take suggestions on additions or changes.
Yeah, I personally like the wording, I just wanna make sure it reflects, you know, some of the things that they were suggesting, because I think they're important.
I like the wording as well. Anyone else input on that?
I like the wording as well. One of the things I think I had sent, and this might have been a while ago, is with the pedestrian pathways and the bike pathways, I know, gosh, it was many years ago, and I think this is actually in, in the plan somewhere, but when we're, when we're specifically calling it out here, is making sure that there is that adequate, I don't know, I don't know the wording for it, I don't know if it's a barrier or spacing between the vehicle traffic and the walkways. And I know that's something that encourages people to walk and ride bikes when there is some sort of a, I mean, whether it's trees or grass, as opposed to the pedestrian pathways being right up on the road near the cars. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed here, but I just wanna bring it up.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else?
I might interject on this just from a staff standpoint.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Absolutely, we, we know about that need for separation from the vehicle areas, and the wording here, I think, allows for that, because it's saying that, you know, if you've got the room, you know, you can make the path wider, but we don't wanna get the path, like, just to be flush with the curb, that kind of thing, in all instances, because that isn't as safe as getting them further away. Absolutely.
That's exactly what I was asking for, so that's great.
Miss Lampers has her hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. Lassane, you go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and, and I would like to add, I think this is all excellent. I would like to add that, you know, I believe the best practice is not only to separate the paths, the, from vehicular traffic, but to also separate the pedestrian from the bicycle paths. So, you know, again, we're feasible to separate, you know, the, the multi-use paths could, could, could contain. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go to the point of, of saying all this in this plan at this level of detail, let's say what the best practice is.
Maybe we could say on there, safe and adequate for both pedestrians and bicyclists, I don't, you know.
And, and, and separated.
Yeah.
Yeah. The national model by, you know, that's advocated by different advocacy organizations is, you know, typically up to twelve feet. Sometimes they can be as narrow as eight feet, but, you know, twelve feet provides the best ability to separate from, you know, bicyclists from pedestrians, and I think that's the type thing we'd like to have, if there's enough room. You know, for instance, the folly road overlay that we have now calls for twelve feet on both sides of folly road. However, we've got some constraints in certain areas of folly road. We're trying to get to twelve feet in almost all instances, but, you know, there are sometimes some constraints, and try, sometimes the width of the path is less important than, like Angie was saying, getting it away from the moving traffic. And that's a really high priority, is getting away from the moving traffic, and sometimes we sacrifice a little bit of that to get it away, but anyway.
And, and, and I'll just jump in, I think of the low line as well, where that will be used by bicycle commuters, which separating them from pedestrians, I think is a wise thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Lassane. Anyone else?
Miss Lampers has her hand raised. Miss Lampers has her.
Go ahead, Sunday, Sunday, you go ahead, you've been quiet, you've been quiet, so I better go ahead.
I have, I have one question, and actually, a, a, a point to maybe add in that number sixteen. Can we, you know, we're adding on more and more to an already cumbersome and stringent application process for anybody coming to the city plan. Could we maybe add a word in there that says promote and incentivize on policies for wider multi-use paths, instead of just adding an entirely, you know, and I'm a hundred percent for the wider pass, but I think that there needs to be some sort of incentive in there to promote and encourage that, and, and really, you have to follow it. But, but, you know, and, and I don't know where you're gonna widen it where feasible, because I don't know that anybody that's gonna come off the money in order to widen existing already, unless the city plans on doing that, or the state. So I'd like to maybe add that word, and incentivize, and also I have a question. Nowhere under transportation, do, is there ever mentioned, and it's really a question for the city. Has anybody ever, do y'all talk about high-speed transportation in any of your meetings?
You mean mass transit, or just the single?
Yeah, mass transit, high-speed transit, just to try to eliminate some of this traffic. I mean, is that anywhere in the discussion in the transportation department, or with the, the inter, intra-governmental agencies?
So.
Is anybody even talking about that?
Being pursued right now, there were a lot, variety of strategies that were studied to help with the congestion in I-26. And light rail was studied, commuter rail has been studied. Neither of those were as effective, given our densities and the traffic issues we have in our region, as the concept of bus rapid transit. And that was viewed as the most economically feasible, and the ability, having the ability to move the greatest number of folks in our environment. And so that's why that was moved forward, it's funded through the Hampstead Sales Tax. Hopefully, it will get the federal funding that they're working to get. And with all that, it would be, you know, implemented as a kind of parallel route to I-26 from almost all the way to Somerville, essentially into downtown Charleston. So that's been a thing that's been studied. I mean, we haven't looked, you know, at like high-speed rail, for example, like high-speed rail to Columbia or Atlanta, or whatever it might be. I don't know, that would kind of be a state-level thing, be fantastic, but in this region, the only thing.
No, Christopher, I was talking about to Columbia, I was really just talking about to Somerville, to Monk's Corner, for the medical, you know, I drive back and forth a lot on the interstate, and I-26 traffic with one car wreck is just crazy. So if, if you're telling me that your proposal with the rapid transit works, and that has been decided more than a high speed between the two, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods and the surrounding communities, then, then that suits me. Thank you.
It's not a city proposal, this was kind of regionally arrived at through the council of governments, but yes.
Thank, thank you, Miss Lampers. You know, one of the things, this word incentivize, I don't know, Mr. Morgan, how, I don't know, we can say the encouraged incentivize, but I don't know if we have, can say that there's incentives out there for this. And Mr. Morgan, does that make better sense to you? I don't know, maybe I'm missing something.
Possible, because it might be that, let's say you've got a neighborhood that's being built for sake of arguments, and these very, well, it's on a road that doesn't have a bike pad facility on it right now. So if the, the developer is willing to put in a very nice bike pad facility across the front of it, on the main kind of collector road, maybe there's some things within the neighborhood itself where not as many people walk, that could be reduced, that kind of thing, in exchange for them building the facility where the most people would be walking, which is along the linear collector route. So I, I think there's some value to that, I mean, I think from a staff standpoint, we wouldn't have any problem putting some wording in there like that.
Okay, so I think, so I think what I'm hearing is, on Mr. Lassane's comments, that the separation of, that we talked about of the, of the past, the bicycle pedestrian, if we conclude that, as well as the incentivize, possibly incentivize people if possible to promote these ideas. Are we hearing anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Jacob, Ms. Jacob.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna support Mr. Lassane and his concept, and sometimes it's just as simple as two different brick styles, because that's routinely used all over Europe. And you know that if you're on the gray brick, you're a biker, and the red brick, you're a pedestrian, and it's, it's not, it's just a slight design on the sidewalk. It's not any big physical development. So, there are simple designs to make those separations within the path. And I agree with Ms. Johnson about the separation from the traffic is also very critical, so thank you.
So we okay with those, with those changes on, on number sixteen?
Got those noted.
Yes, I have those noted, and also, Donna, to your earlier question, the changes to the narrative are on page sixty-five and page sixty-seven, in the most recent version of the plan.
Thank you, Chloe. Anything else on number sixteen? If not, Mr. Morgan?
All right, so this is in the community facilities and priority investment area, a new recommendation that says research and evaluate the efficiency of capital projects development and the maintenance of existing facilities. It's a little bit of a. It's a little bit of a, uh, open-ended one. Um, I think, I think the commissioner who recommended it, maybe she might want to explain a little bit on that, you know, and, and let you all have the discussion on that one.
Anyone?
Are you, are you calling on me, Christopher?
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead. We're calling on you.
It was not generated by staff.
Oh, no, maybe you could clarify this for everyone. That's all.
Well, um, the clarification is that it's a, um, the community engagement during this process was parks was every third word out of everyone's mouth. And we are in the process right now of doing a parks master plan for the city of Charleston. Um, if you look very carefully at the Department of Parks and Recreation, you find out that they do everything from building the forensic labs to changing the light bulbs in City Hall, to building our parks and our recreational facilities. And I think our city has just grown to the fact that we might need to think about how that might be better, um, laid out in the city more efficiently. And the example is when stormwater, um, department was pulled from public services in order to make a very focused look at stormwater and stormwater maintenance and stormwater management within the city because of the problem with stormwater. So I think it might be time for us to look at that department that it may have, you know, because the city has grown and there's a lot of requirements for, um, capital projects, the maintenance of our capital projects, the development of our parks. We just might want to look at how that department is structured and evaluated so that we don't get bogged down in, you know, providing these sorts of facilities and parks that the public is anxiously asking for during the city plan. And that was advised that I made that as sort of vague as possible, so it didn't sound very specific, because it is once again just an evaluation, because we've grown and we need these services to, for the public.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. But I tell you, and, and I have no issue with those being in there, but the way I read it without that in there, it would still pertain to those areas. You said there is designated the city centers, neighborhood edge and certain neighborhood areas. If that wasn't in there, those area, those things could still be relaxed development requirements, because they wouldn't include it at all, as all. Am I reading that correctly, Chris? They would still be included anyway, if they weren't specifically designated that way.
Um, are we talking about the same thing?
Yeah, Charlie, I think we were talking about number nine.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Page six.
I apologize. I'm wrong. Sorry. I went off. Sorry.
I wasn't talking about land use, so I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a process question.
Yes, sir.
I, I believe where, I, I believe that the commission should, should have staff present the, uh, proposed changes, have the public comment, and then the, the commission should debate and approve or disapprove what's been proposed.
I agree.
Um, I, I, I really believe that this sort of ad hoc, discuss some and don't discuss others. I, I'd like to get through the discussion by, presentation by staff, hear from the public, and then I think the commission can weigh in on, on each individual item.
I second that thought process.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll do it that way. We'll just keep moving through then. I have no issue with that. Um, I just thought that, I thought there was someone that said they wanted to comment on particular, if there's a question, we'll stop. So, Mr. Morgan, you go ahead.
I apologize. I got Ms. Jacob to give her background on that one. So, yeah. Okay. So, um, all right. So we'll go on to the housing area. And on number two, we have a slight change strongly and encourage, strongly encourage and create incentives for diversity of housing types within neighborhoods, citywide, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Then we'll go on to the next page. Okay. These are still under housing. Uh, number seven, develop strategies for preserving existing affordable housing set to expire. Uh, that would be tax credit type housing, things like that, and naturally occurring affordable housing units throughout the city. And number eight, expand the partnership with the Charleston Redevelopment Corporation, the Palmetto Community Land Trust, and establish a land bank for future affordable housing development. And then the number ten, additions of allocate dedicated resources and staff to assist lower-income homeowners and African-American owners of historic homes to retain, reinvest, and redevelop their properties to increase the amount of naturally occurring affordable housing stock. Um, and we removed a few words from this to, to reword it this way.
Thank you, sir. You go ahead.
Okay. All right. Well-
Ms. Lempisis has raised her hand.
Sandy?
I'm, I'm skipping ahead real quick, but I just wondered, um, Christopher, if y'all could, um, just maybe add workforce housing in addition to affordable housing throughout this entire, um, section. Workforce housing is a little bit different than affordable housing, and I think we are in dire both.
If, if I could speak to that quickly, we, we've defined affordable housing in the city plan as including low income through workforce housing. Um, so that is part of this recommendation. And any, any, any reference to the word affordable housing in the plan, anywhere it's stated, is including both workforce housing and low-income housing.
And I think, Chloe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think throughout our city organization, when we now refer to affordable housing, that includes workforce housing. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chloe.
Thank, thank you all. Ms. Morgan, you go ahead.
Okay. So in land use area now, uh, one addition, and that is continue research and outreach efforts with African-American settlement communities to ensure future development and land use recommendations are in concert with communities' goals. Then in our final section, the equity and resilience section, uh, we have, uh, change. Uh, we've removed some, a sentence and instead stated to update the downtown plan to fully implement recommendations from various plans and studies that address flood protection, new development and redevelopment and tourism management. And again, this is some things we've heard from a variety of different sources, uh, that have led to this change in the equity and resilience item. And then one final one here, number twelve, continue to study the effects of extreme heat and pursue policies that protect people in all areas of the city from extreme heat, especially lower-income and elderly community members who may have more limited ability to adapt. And this came from our chief resilience officer. And those are the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So we have, uh, several people who've signed up to speak, as well as written comments. Chloe, um, I guess if we're starting with Mr. Zlogar, is he available?
Yes, Mr. Zlogar, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mrs. Zlogar. We're ready when you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, this is John Zlogar with the, uh, Johns Island Task Force. Um, first, we'd like to really, uh, uh, thank staff for all the effort they've put into this, especially relative to the, um, elevation-based, uh, efforts they're doing and also reaffirming the urban growth boundary. But there is one area we think that could be improved, improved in the city plan, and that's the recommended densities for the rural and low-impact slash conserved areas. As a way of background, the rural areas are currently zoned as conservation. This limits the density to one dwelling unit per one and a half acres. But in the draft city plan before you, the density has been increased to one dwelling unit per one acre. Now, this is a significant upzoning and is not in line with the, the city plan's support of the UGB. And the city plan definitely does a great job of supporting UGB. Therefore, we recommend that the density for the rural area be maintained at its current level of one dwelling unit per one and a half acres. And we also recommend that this fence be applied to the low-impact slash conserved areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zlogar, for your, uh, comments and your time. Next, I think is, uh, Mr. Winslow Hasty. Is that correct, Chloe?
Yes.
Mr. Hasty, you go ahead whenever you're ready. Looks like he's muted.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Good, uh, good evening. This is Winslow Hasty with Historic Charleston Foundation. Um, thank you for the opportunity. Um, you know, we, we've had a lot of interaction with the city staff and, and with our constituents on this issue. And we appreciate the response, responsiveness that we've gotten from, from the planning staff. We're very excited about this document. We think it, it presents a bold vision for the next ten years. We in particular are very, uh, excited about the commitment to the Dutch Dialogues. Charleston report, uh, the commitment to affordable attainable housing as well as a focus, continued focus on Charleston's historic and cultural resources. Um, we also want to just say that a lot of our recommendations that we put forth have been, uh, incorporated, and we very much appreciate that. Uh, we, we want to thank city staff and the planning commission for that. Um, we do have one concern that we want to bring forth. It is sort of, um, we just noticed fairly recently when we were looking at the land use map for the peninsula. Um, it's in the land use section, uh, in the land use map for the peninsula, it's on page one twelve, at least in the June ninth version. Um, and we're concerned about the fact that what is now being dur- uh, termed city center, it used to be called, I think, urban core, but it's now termed city center in this new document. Um, has the, the, uh, the, uh, boundaries of that have changed pretty significantly. And so it is taken, being taken away from all the areas downtown, south of Market Street. So King, Meeting Streets and Broad Street have all been removed from what used to be called urban core, now city center category. Um, and now designates, I think, those areas as neighborhood. And we have very significant concerns about, you know, you think of the four corners of law and City Hall and the judicial complex, the federal courthouse, all these really important civic uses as well as commercial businesses that are at line, uh, meeting Broad and King Streets. And to take them out of the city center, we think is a huge philosophical shift from the way the city has thought about downtown Charleston. Um, and we just are very concerned about that designation changing so dramatically and really think that merits, uh, restudy and hopefully will, uh, re-extend, uh, city center down to those traditional, the sort of civic heart of downtown Charleston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hasty. We appreciate your work and your time. Uh, next we have Mr. James Wilson. Chloe, is Mr. Wilson available?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is James Wilson with Wambul Bon Dickinson. Uh, first, uh, very much want to thank the city planning staff for taking the time to talk with us about our, our concerns and frankly, help us understand the comprehensive plan better. And so very much appreciate that. As, as we have, um, and I apologize, I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of the owners of the Kane Hoy property this evening. Um, is we've expressed before, of course, the Kane Hoy property has in place existing PUD zoning and development agreements that are going to guide growth there for the next twenty-five years. And as we've come to get our, uh, arms around the plan better, we, we, we do believe that the plan is largely consistent with that, with those documents. And again, appreciate staff kind of helping us, uh, better understand this. The, there's been some discussion, um, about the, uh, about the long-leaf pines on part of this property. And, um, and we just want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, the harvesting of these pine trees has been going on for many, many years and continues. Um, and were planted there for timber. There's also large sections of this property, there's, that have been set aside, including various buffers and a six-hundred-fifty-acre sanctuary area for conservation. And we do think that, uh, that those plant, the existing PUDs and development plans really strike a reasonable balance. And so we just wanted to make, make that point, let everyone know that, uh, that frankly, we think the comprehensive plan, it does track generally right correctly with the existing zoning. And, uh, appreciate everybody's time on these issues. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your comments and your time as well. Next we have Anna Catherine Carroll. Is Ms. Carroll available?
Yes, thank you. This is Anna Catherine Carroll with the Preservation Society of Charleston. We would just like to congratulate the planning commission and city staff on a very thoughtful and exacting review of the latest version of this draft city plan. The public process thus far and the product that's before you this evening demonstrate that community input is being taken seriously. And we're particularly encouraged to see the incorporation of specific recommendations that we ask the commission to consider in its most recent review, including recommendations pertaining to cultural resources and economic development. And as just one example, the recommendation to establish a task force to, to update the tourism management plan is highly positive. Further, we're equally encouraged to see the incorporation of strong recommendations from our partner organizations like Charleston Moves, the Coastal Conservation League and Historic Charleston Foundation. And we really appreciate the level of collaboration that we've seen throughout this process that's been going on for more than a year. Um, overall, we see this visioning document as foundational for establishing meaningful and unprecedented goals for equity inclusion in the city of Charleston. And we look forward to partnering with the community and city leadership to help make this vision a reality. So we thank you for your continued and thoughtful review of this critically important plan and the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Carol, for your comments. Appreciate it. Uh, next we have, um, Savannah Brennan. Is Ms. Brennan available? Ms. Brennan, you go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Savannah Brennan, and I'm the Director of Programming for Charleston Moves. Uh, during your last special meeting on the city plan, my colleague Katie Zimmerman suggested a couple of revisions to the plan to incorporate two transportation items. And based on your discussion today, it sounds like they have both been incorporated. So thank you very much for that. Really appreciate it. Um, our specific recommendation for the city to develop formal policies to require multi-use paths aims to prevent future, um, lost opportunities that bring much-needed safety improvements with redevelopment. Unfortunately, Bike Walk BCD offers excellent guidance on where this space should be prioritized. So it's great that it's referenced in this city plan alongside DOT's Complete Streets policy. Uh, Charleston Moves is very appreciative of the planning commission's understanding of how safe biking and walking infrastructure plays a major role in developing a livable and enjoyable city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan, for your comments and y'all's organization's work. Thank you. Next we have Betsy LaForce. Uh, is Ms. LaForce available?
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you again. Um, this is Betsy LaForce with the Coastal Conservation League. We appreciate and echo all the appreciations to the staff and planning commissioners for incorporating much of the feedback the Conservation League has shared over the course of this expertly-led process. We appreciate also the thorough review by the planning commissioners and the extra work and additional meeting put in to send this draft to city council with meaningful recommendations. This is an excellent plan with a lot of progressive content that we're really excited about. But there is one area in particular we believe still needs your attention, the proposed future land use maps for Kane Hoy. Suburban zoning is slated for the majority of Upper Kane Hoy, north of Clements Ferry Road, an area we believe should remain rural. Kane Hoy can be developed in a way that utilizes its high ground to meet the developer's purpose and need while also preserving the important natural and cultural resources on the site that go far beyond the old-growth long-leaf pine that serves as habitat for federally-protected red-cockaded woodpeckers that Mr. Wilson referenced. The environmental impacts of harvesting timber versus clearcutting for suburban sprawl are very different. We wanted to draw to your attention that in twenty-nineteen, the Conservation League and the Southern Environmental Law Center commissioned Dover Cole and Partners, the same firm who did the Plan West Ashley Report, to study Kane Hoy and develop concept plans that avoid the known natural and cultural resources as well as the vast majority of the one-hundred-year flood plain, while creating walkable mixed-use communities centered around the existing transportation infrastructure at the same density, uh, that's being proposed and is currently approved in the PUDs. We have circulated that report document widely and would be happy to share it with planning commissioners as well. Thank you as always for your consideration of our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. LaForce, for your comments and your time as well. Chloe, we have, um, several written comments that I'd ask you to read into the record.
Of course. Okay, we had, um, five comments, all asking for, uh, the northern area of Kane Hoy, upper Clements Ferry Road to remain rural. Uh, those were received from Kristen Karstafen at forty-three Littleton Avenue, from William Anderson, six-five-five Clearview Drive, David Michael, One Bishop Gadsden Way, Paula Brady at twelve George Street, and Lynn Hanlon at sixty-seven Meeting Street. So all of their comments reflected that sentiment. We also received a comment from Margaret Peary, uh, two comments actually from Margaret, fifteen Council Street. I believe that the area of the city from Market to Broad, between King and Meeting, should remain a part of the city center. The designation should not be changed to neighborhood. That area should not become primarily residential. Uh, and then I have copied and pasted the Preservation Society concerns about emissions of key concepts in the plan. I agree with their concerns. I agree with their concerns, in quotation marks, "A vision for a culture of citizen awareness, responsibility, and action towards water management is needed, and the plan in its current form misses this opportunity. And more in-depth discussion of tourism management, including the implications for affordable housing, neighborhood-serving businesses, quality of life for Charleston residents. It's unclear why an initial recommendation to create an office of economic development has been removed. We urge the city to reincorporate this provision. The city should commit to improving and expanding public green space, including its park system by requiring greater contributions to the public realm from new developments." From Ladon Page at 886 Hunt Club Run. "I would like to express my opposition to allow development on the 9,000 acres north of Clements Ferry Road. I also want to express opposition and concerns with allowing the Long Savannah Project to move forward. Charleston is quickly becoming overdeveloped, leading to destruction of critical habitats and wetlands and increased flooding. This is not sustainable growth. Even the higher forests help protect us from flooding and provide ecosystems habitats, and once they are gone, they are gone. We cannot undo the harm caused by this continued growth. Our focus should be on protection of resources and the livability of residents. I'm very concerned about the future direction of Charleston." From Rob Williams at 734 Goodlett Circle. "After reading the recent article in The Post and Courier about revitalizing King Street, have the following recommendation to be discussed during your planning meeting. Close King Street from Calhoun to Broad for motorized vehicles from 10 a.m. until 10 p.m. daily. During a visit to the city of Cork Island, I witnessed a dramatic increase in commerce in the inner-city Main Street, which was closed to auto truck traffic from 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. All deliveries were made to the local businesses prior to those hours. Start a trial for one month, not one day during the peak of tourist season." And finally, from Dory Long of James Island. "First, any recommendations related to advancing or supporting the extension of Interstate 526 across Johnson James Island should be removed. Instead, less expensive projects that enhance equitable mobility and don't harm cultural, natural resources should be supported. Examples include the Maybank Pitchforks on Johns Island and additional Low Country Rapid Transit Lines for West Ashley and James Island that expand upon the initial spine along Rivers Avenue that is currently in development. Second, please encourage planning commissioners to designate the area of the Kane Hoy Peninsula, north of Clements Ferry Road, as a rural area. That change will help protect the approximately 4,500 acres of freshwater wetlands and longleaf pine forests that are home to threatened and endangered species, as well as irreplaceable cultural resources, including those of the Jack Primus community."
Thank you, Chloe. That'll close the public aspect of this part of the meeting. And before we move on to commission members for questions, comments, I'd ask Mr. Morgan, anyone from the staff, if they'd like, if they have any comments on any of the speakers or the written comments. If not, that's okay too. I just wanted to ask.
Sure, sure. I had a couple of notes. So Mr. Zlogar had a question about the rural areas and one unit and acre. The reality is, is that Charleston County, which, you know, kind of worked with us to set up the urban growth boundary since the very beginning on that, they have allowed outside of UGB up to one unit and acre. And that was in our, all our previous plans that we've had for UGB that have involved the UGB. And they've continued here. We actually, you know, don't recommend, of course, anything both denser than one unit and acre if it is outside the UGB. And of course, we don't annex anything that's outside the UGB. So I think that we're still honoring the whole character of the UGB. Nothing has really changed there is what I'm saying. This is not a zoning ordinance. Conservation zoning is an option for areas that are outside of the UGB, and that's one unit every acre and a half. And again, we aren't annexing other areas out there. Any zonings that are greater than one unit and acre are pre-existing to the, before the UGB even existed. And I know, even though it's been around for 20 years, we've got some zoning on the ground outside the UGB that's, that's denser than that. But that is something that's been in place for, for several decades. In reference to, I've got a couple of slides I can kind of go into. If you all wanted more detail on the Kane Hoy issue, is there any interest in the commissioners and discussion on the Kane Hoy comments we heard?
Commission members?
I'm seeing, okay. So I'm going to go to a screen share on this. And I'll also have a couple of slides in reference to the city center comments that we got too. Let me go to share screen. Let me find those. Where did I put them? Now I'm going to have fun finding them. Okay, where did they go? That's the recommendations. Hold on one second. I'm going to minimize and find it. I'm sorry to have to dig through this. Where are these? Okay. All right, now it's doing fun things here. Here we go. Okay, here we are. And I can go here. You'd think with a year and a half of Zoom under my belt, I wouldn't have, okay, here we go. So are you all seeing a Kane Hoy map now in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Colors and things like that?
Yes.
So just for clarification in the Kane Hoy area, of course, this is the recommended area along Clements Ferry Road for city center. And then this is the area that's recommended for suburban, and then this is the area that's recommended for suburban edge. We don't have rural areas anywhere in this plan that are inside the UGB. So because this whole area is inside the UGB, it would not have a rural designation. That's just one of the principles that's been in this plan, as well as our previous two plans that have involved the UGB. So rural is typically outside the UGB, and there hasn't been a proposal to change the UGB here. It's also important to note that we are dealing with, of course, a PUD and a development agreement that allows the densities and types of development that is coming in the, the Kane Hoy development. But it's also important to note, and let's see if we can start moving the slides here. So the area that is city center is within about a half mile to quarter mile of Clements Ferry Road here. And then there's an area of the suburban category that's about a mile and a quarter deep. There are lots of wetland areas in here. You know, this is an area that would not necessarily be all developed anyway because of the wetland areas, because of commitments the owners have made to preserve areas of old growth pine. You know, it's, it's really kind of about balance. You know, there is going to be some development here, and I'm going to kind of show you another slide that is part of our justification for the development here. But then there's also going to be preservation of areas too. So we think it's, it's balancing development and these preservation needs out here is, is kind of what this plan is doing. But this is the image from Wagner &amp; Ball's study, same scale here. And you see how much of this area is the high ground. And so this was a big part of the reason that in the plan, we designated greater densities out here because there is so much high ground. And you might remember when we were talking about elevation-based land use recommendations, we were trying to get away from the lower areas. And in fact, out here in Kane Hoy, our recommendations are getting away from some of these lower areas, but concentrating the development more in the high ground. Now, the Wagner &amp; Ball folks don't say build on every square inch of high ground. Of course, you need areas for filtration, and you want to keep some of that canopy and those good soils and all that. But we think what we've got in the plan is, is a pretty good area of balance. So that was kind of our explanation as to how we came up with those. And it's balancing the, the PUD and the development interests that are already in place with the city's need to grow in an area like this because it is such high elevations. And we do have another image here that shows the elevations. You know, this is some of the highest land in the city, you know, 25 feet plus. So talk about areas that are going to be immune to climate, climate change for decades and decades and decades. This is an area that would be. So, you know, there is some logic to that as well. So this is kind of what I wanted to show you in the Kane Hoy area. And then we've got some images now into the downtown.
Can we, can we go back to that and ask questions?
Absolutely. The slide?
Yeah, Ms. Jacobs had her hand up, so I'll just follow in the rules. She can go first.
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
And I, and I may be jumping in on the same question, Mr. Bailey. Do you, can you illustrate on one of these maps, Christopher, the outline of these PUD development agreements across this land use? Because I think that's most important for the, for the community to see is that, you know, the recommendations of this area is a, based on a global look of the city, but also in consideration with land use and PUD agreements and development agreements that already exist on, I think, from what I understand, a large portion of this land. Is there a way for, do you have readily available something that could show us that? Or you could just trace it for the, for these several people?
I don't have it the same scale, but I can tell you from knowledge of it and having worked with it for a number of years, the greatest densities in those PUDs are in these areas in general.
Right, but I'm talking about the border of the PUD. Like, how far does this PUD go across this land use?
Well, it, it goes all through here. In other words, if you, can you all see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, it includes all this area in here, and then it comes back around here. Some of this is in other development agreements, but then it includes this site, and then all the way down here, and all the way up here, and up along this creek, and then all the way over to Jack Primus.
So basically, basically, and this is for, you know, my understanding as a new commissioner, as well as these several of the citizens that have, you know, commented, written in, called in. This land is already committed by a PUD or a development agreement at some level.
Yes.
I think that's most important for everyone to understand. So thank you for that.
Mr. Bailey, you have anything to add?
That was exactly my question.
Great, great minds think alike.
Okay, all right.
Morgan, you go ahead.
Response to the comments about the downtown designations. So this is the downtown Charleston area. And of course, the dark red is what we call our city centers. In the past, it was comparable to, Urban Core is what we called it. And, and you know, some of that is planner marketing, let's call it that. Because really, some plans do things like they do, you know, land use area one, land use area two. And they don't kind of try to personify it in ways that we were trying to do here. But I hope that people are not confusing the phrase city center with central business district. They are completely different. City, central business district is a, is a kind of business term and kind of a, a center of the city term that every community has. And, you know, none of this would change what is the central business district. This is about, these categories are about intensity of use. And so city, city center is the most intense category in the plan. And we felt that when we looked at downtown, and I'm going to zoom in on that. So this is the lower area of downtown. You've got the Charlestown neighborhood, the Charleston Village area, French Quarter and Ansonboro. When we looked at where height districts are over here, if you look at this, all of this area of downtown is fairly low height districts with the one exception, the one exception of about 50 feet in from King Street and about 50 feet in from Meeting Street. There is a small area of six-story, which has a couple of six-story buildings in it. I think it's called Liberty Center here. And then the hotel, the, oh, I can't believe I'm forgetting the name of the hotel, it's corner of Queen and, not Queen, yeah, Queen and King. I mean, Queen and Meeting. Somebody will.
The Mills House.
Mills House. Thank you. Ding ding ding. That's the winner. The Mills House Hotel. So those are two buildings that are a little bit taller. And of course, when you're on Broad Street, the People's Building, which is a historic structure. But when we think about what development might occur in this area in the coming years, we think about like where their vacant lots. Because all these buildings are historic buildings and things, they aren't going to be torn down. But there are vacant lots, particularly parking lots, surface parking lots, things like that. And our concern was that if this area stayed in our city center area, that that would encourage greater heights and greater densities on some surface lots that might not be as appropriate for that in the context of all these other historic buildings. Again, it's not about changing what is the cit, central business district of our city. It's about where the greatest intensity is. And we felt that on King and Meeting from, you know, Charleston Place Up, which is a fairly intense development, and then all the things you get around College of Charleston, and then going all the way up King Street. You know, those were the right areas to be in that kind of city center area. And they were also had proximity, this is a very, very important part about this, to the Low Country Rapid Transit. They're within about a half mile, a five or 10-minute walk of Low Country Rapid Transit. And we were trying to make sure that everything, particularly on the peninsula, that was within a five-minute walk of that and that was not already part of a context of a neighborhood, was in city center. And where we had neighborhoods, things like that, that we were staying away from that. So that was what it was about. It was about level of intensity. It was not trying to change the central business district or anything like that. You might notice also that, you know, like West Edge is included. I don't know if, you know, most people who define the central business district would say West Edge is part of it. But it is an area of intense development because of the Low Country Rapid Transit and its proximity to MUSC and, and, and things like that. And that is a completely different environment from what Broad Street is, from what lower King and lower Meeting is. And so that's a kind of roundabout explanation on, on that issue. And happy to answer further questions about that.
All right. Any other comments, Mr. Morgan? You're good. Thank you. So the way I think I'd like to handle this is, you know, chime in is we have recommendations that are printed out that were sent to us. We discussed a couple of them. I think we discussed number 16 under, excuse me, under transportation pretty well. And I think we agreed on employee mates and mates on it, notes on it. Can we just go through, starting with page one and engagement, either five or six, is any concerns on those changes?
Would you all like me to screen share again with those? Okay. Let's get back to this.
And that's a.
Shoot.
Chris, you do pretty well, man. I tell you.
I'm having fun today with my screen share. Sorry. Let me get back to this. I don't know where this thing ended up. It disappeared. I mean, here we go. Okay.
So five and six.
Here we go.
Great. So let's talk about five and six, see if anybody has any concerns or any other changes on those two, and let's lock those out.
I'll go ahead and put a motion on the table to approve, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, is that five and six under engagement?
I'll second Harry's motion.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs will second that. And what I'm going to do is, these would be, yeah, we can do a roll call votes on each of these. But anyway, in the discussion on these two, any concerns with them? If not, can we have just a mutual agreement? These are good without doing a roll call vote. I hate to do a roll call vote on all of them if we're taking it at the end. We'll do a roll call vote if there's any controversy. Is all commission members good with those five and six under engagement?
I'll add my motion that we've approved this by acclamation.
Great. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Great. And I'll take, I'll take a voice, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's say that worked pretty well. Okay, so now we'll go to under natural resources, and we're under number five. And seven. Any concerns or motion under those two? There are no concerns?
I will make a motion to approve.
Great. Mr. Lassane makes a motion to play approve.
I'll second that.
Great. Ms. Johnson, under natural resources, the changes. If there's no other discussion, again, we'll just do a roll call with a voice. Everyone in favor of that? Aye, aye. Thank you. Appreciate it. So now we'll go to cultural resources. And we have, I'm sorry, we have cultural resources. We have number seven, number 10, and number 12. Any concerns with any of those? If not?
I'll make a motion. And Mr. Chairman, just for process sake, if we're going to do the voice vote, for the record, you might ask for nay votes in case there is a nay vote.
Good, good call, Mr. Lassane. I appreciate it. There's a motion from my Mr. Lassane that we're okay with number seven. Excuse me, under, under.
Seven, 10, and 12.
Great. Under natural resources. And Ms. Jacobs' second. Any comments? If not, we'll ask all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the record stands as no one opposed on economic development. We have a. All right, the record stands as no one opposed on economic development. We have a couple of changes, number two, uh, item two. Item five. Item eight. And item should be fourteen and sixteen. Any comments on any of those?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I I would um the only, the only issue I have with any of these is when we uh, then, as Mr. Bailey stated earlier in the meeting, where they're prescriptive rather than suggesting. For example, since it's up on the screen now, number sixteen says, establish a task force to update the city's tourism management plan. I I don't have any issue with this. I think this is a good suggestion. But my only issue with is that we're, we're saying establish a task force. I think we should allow the city to uh proceed with updating the city's tourism management plan in the way they see best fit. I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the planning commission. So I would just strike.
Can we, can we add, can we add the word in front, consider, uh, consider, establish?
I I would just say, uh, my, my motion would be to uh, to approve this language as written, with the exception of striking the li- the the language, establish a task force. Two.
I'm on board with that. I think that keeps the spirit of what needs to be done.
So it sounds like there's a motion that we approve everything on, on economic development, with the exception of sixteen, that we strike those words, establish a task force. And Ms. Johnson's in second of that, am I correct? Any other questions, considerations on those items, for those items under um?
Charlie, I I feel like on the prior page, one of those was somewhat prescriptive as well.
Okay, must have been on um.
Can, can we go back to the, on the screen?
Yeah, that, and economic development, um, number two.
Maybe dedicate, where it says dedicate staff and resources, maybe.
I am the office economic development. Yeah, that, I agree with you, Mr. Bailey. How would you like?
Not the same as number four, where you say partner with, because that would be prescriptive as well, right?
Judges, I think going back to what I said originally, if we could, and we don't have to do this now, but if we could maybe make a blanket statement to just use the same wording in any of these um items that are, that should not be prescriptive. Um, I don't know what that is right now, but I think if we are consistent with our wording, that will help this situation. Otherwise, we're going to go back through all these and and reevaluate them.
Yeah, I hear you, but we're almost, we don't have that many more to go, but um.
I mean, I I agree with everything that's been said, and I think perhaps number two and number uh four. We should just uh add the words that we see above in number twelve on the same page, reevaluate the feasibility of. And just say, evaluate the feasibility of dedicating resources. Evaluate the feasibility of partnering with technical, with Trident Tech and so forth.
I'm good with that.
Yep. And I think that puts it in then that that's, we'd like them to look at it, but it doesn't say they have to. Okay, are we all on page with that?
And Mr. Chairman, I will, I will amend my motion to include this, the uh the substance of this discussion.
I I I'm making note of that, um, but there are multiple other instances not under review tonight. Um, previous recommendations that have not been discussed that use the language dedicate staff and resources or some very similar language to that. Um, do you, are you also motioning to make that change to all instances where that language is used?
I am not. I think, I think uh restricted to only those items we've discussed.
Yeah, some of we discussed at the fir- original meeting, I believe, so.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Then I do think we need to clarify, because I think it was Erica brought up one that was not one of the ones that we're discussing tonight.
I wasn't, and I'm, I'm not bringing that one up. I'm not bringing that one up for the purposes of saying, well, here's, you know, maybe we need to reevaluate that. I'm saying that a lot of the verbs that are being used in here seem prescriptive as opposed to, you know, this is a, as, rather than suggestive. And so I think maybe what we look at is, you know, just an overall catch-all sentence. You know, that describes all the recommendations, saying while some of these may seem prescriptive, these are just our suggestions for how the city and city council and city planning department should proceed in the next ten years. I mean, that's, I mean, essentially, that's what we're doing. We're, we're making recommendations. Um, and these are things that we would like to see, but we know that we can't prescribe them.
I think Mr. I I believe Mr. LaSane's last comment would probably cover that, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We're having a workshop with planning, I mean, with the city council, you know, subsequent to um this review tonight, if we pass it. And I think those are the part of that discussion where we could, you know, reflect our, our sentiment in that regard.
I'm sorry, I hear you, and and that would give us the opportunity to uh, to clarify anything, so. Mr. LaSane?
And I, and I appreciate Ms. uh Ms. Harrison's comment, and I think that is a very good suggestion. Um, and I think as we move the plan towards city council, and perhaps that is a suggestion we add at city council, my, my motion is restricted only to this section that we've been discussing. And and Christopher, you can move the slide back one to page three. Um, this would apply to, to item number two. Item number four, and then if you will go to uh page four uh, to item number sixteen. As we've already discussed. Just to clarify my motion for everyone.
I agree with that. I think it was seconded, but I agree with that.
Are we waiting for a vote on that motion?
I'm sorry, yeah. So let's go ahead and uh, take a vote on that, and I'll ask anyone opposed. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to that? Okay, thank you. So now we're at uh, I believe we're at um
Transportation.
Yes. Sorry, I'm a little lost at terms of pages, so we're now at uh
Transportation.
Transportation. And we've got uh
I'm going to go to page five, because
I think there's sixteen where we talked about this a good bit, and I think um I think we discussed this a little bit, and uh, is there a motion on that? I think we talked about Mr. LaSane talked about adding the the separation. And also, and well, is possibly incentivizing, when Ms. Lempis has discussed incentivizing, for developers to do that work.
And I, and I believe Ms. Johnson's comments about separation from vehicular traffic are also.
Right, those, that as well, I'm sorry, yes. So those three things we discussed, the, the separation of pedestrian bike, pedestrian traffic, and as well as possible incentivizing for developers to do, implement those things. We okay with that, with sixteen, with with that change? I'm asked for a motion.
I move to approve.
Wait, thank you, Ms. Harrison, second?
I'll second this motion.
Ms. Jacobs, all favor, favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we'll go to community facilities and priority improvements, investments. And there's one item, I think it's number nine. Any concerns with that?
Mr. Chairman, I I will have to say that I, this one does give me a concern for the same reason. You know, I believe that the Capital Projects Division does uh great work with this, the resources that they have, and um and I, and I believe that, you know, this is the job of the mayor. And I, and, you know, this is a division of a department of the city of Charleston that we're sort of directing the, the, the mayor uh to research and evaluate. If I'm not mistaken, this was done uh in twenty sixteen, the city did a, an efficiency study of the entire city uh government operation. Um, and I, I just think this is uh outside of the scope of the role of the planning commission.
I think in the city plan, it sounds like we're micromanaging somebody, but um, anyway, uh, any comments on this?
I agree with Mr. LaSane's comments.
So you would, Harry, basically, you would say, and again, I'm not going to cut anyone off, but someone obviously might have this recommendation, if they'd like to comment, please speak up. You're saying that we implement, that we pass the aspect without number nine, correct?
Yeah, and I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to disapprove uh this addition to the plan, number nine.
So we approve everything with the exception of number nine, right?
And I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, seconds. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I want to, I want to clarify my motion that we approve all of the items under this section with the exception of number eight.
No, number eight?
Number nine.
Number nine? Yeah, yeah.
Number nine.
Yeah, with the exception of nine, I'm with you. And now, Ms. Johnson, you find with the way clarify, great, thank you. All in favor of that, please say aye?
Aye.
Great, and anyone opposed to that? Okay, thank you. Under housing, we've got under number seven, we've got a change, and number ten.
And number two as well.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yep, number two, yeah, there's three words there.
They got that, and then
And I think that, you know, when you say, and the number two, you say strongly encourages, that makes sense the way you say it. So you're encouraging, it's not saying you're doing something, so. Any concerns with any of those? If not, is there a motion to approve those?
I've, I've moved that we approve this section as, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. LaSane, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. All in favors, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you. Anyone opposed? Okay, under land use. Uh, one change to number nine?
Number thirteen, number thirteen.
I apologize, yeah, I'm sorry. Number thirteen? Any concerns with that number thirteen?
I'll move that we approve this section as amended by adding number thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. LaSane, second?
Second.
Great, Mr. Bailey, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Is there anyone opposed? Thank you. Equity and resilience. We got uh to number three and number twelve. Any concerns with the changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the changes uh that were, that were given to us?
I did have one question about the downtown plan. Um, Christopher, I was looking on our city plan website. Is the downtown plan, I I didn't see it, but maybe I might, it just might have been an oversight. I know it's been referenced in the past, and I think that plan's what from almost early, not nineteen ninety-seven, but
Ninety-nine.
I won't tell you how young I was. If I graduated high school in ninety-seven, that tells you how, how long ago that plan was made.
You're still very young, I can tell you that. I know that much, you're young.
Um, I mean, I just kind of, is it really, do we need to update the plan, or do we need to just do a brand new plan for downtown? I mean, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand twenty-one?
I think in our minds, update means, you know, completely redo it. Uh, I mean, there's still some relevant items in there. But for instance, it looked at downtown as just being up to the Septima Clark Parkway. And, you know, these days downtown includes things all the way up in Nomo and and all that. Um, it didn't really look at the perimeter protection issues that we're now working with for downtown. It didn't look at the water issues. It didn't look at um, you know, uh, as much into the tourism stuff as we probably might need to do. So, you know, it it it's a complete rewrite, no doubt.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. We, can we get a motion to approve uh, as given to us, the equity and resilience items? Ms. Harrison, can I pick on you? Make a move?
I move to approve.
I thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. LaSane. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any, is there anyone that's opposed to, to that idea? Great, thank you. So now let's do a um, with, with what we just talked about, what we passed on each individual section. Can we get a motion to approve the plan? Again, Chloe has all the details of what we went through on each section. Uh, approve the plan with our individual section recommendations implemented.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify, is this the, what you're saying is the imply, entire plan document? Making motions to endorse the entire plan document on the city council, is that what?
Yes, sir. On with the changes we've discussed tonight and voted on tonight. Yes, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jacobs, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, uh, I don't know who's second and first, so I don't want to cut anybody off. Ms. Brian Jenkins, was you, was that you?
It could have been.
All right, all right, well, I'm gonna take you as that. I know it was you and Mr. LaSane, but I'm a little slow on this, so. So motion by Ms. Jacobs, second by Ms. Brian Jenkins, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brian Jenkins?
Aye, in favor.
Wait, Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lempis?
Aye, in favor.
Great, Mr. LaSane?
Aye, in favor.
And I don't think, Mr. Flug, I don't think he's with us today, is, is that correct, Chloe? Yeah, okay. And I'm in favor as well, so that would be eight in favor and none opposed. Folks, I appreciate your patience tonight, and then I appreciate everyone's work and the staff's work on all of this. And I think we've, and I look forward to us meeting with city council to talk about it and give our thoughts as well, so that'd be a fun meeting as well, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Um, there were a couple of things that were said during this process that I might recommend that you, as the chairman of our commission, write a, a bit of a cover letter to um, the city council that we're, brought this forward to them, especially with our conversation about the no growth. The, the dis- description about how we're using the words in front of our recommendation. So it sort of points them in some directions that we may have in our workshop. So I might recommend that we, that you would write a cover letter to the council. Um, sort of outlining the guiding principles, you know, giving the highlights of what we've talked about.
I'd be glad to do that. What I'll do is do that and then send all your draft of that. So that we're all on the same page. See, this, make sure everyone agrees with that, what I put in, on pen. Thank you, Miss Jacobs.
Alert, um, we, we did get notification from the clerk's office today that they would like to to get the plans to the council members, because the um workshop is next Wednesday, starting at two P M. And um, they would like to get plans to the council members. So we're probably needing to ship those out tomorrow with the changes that you all have made today. I don't know, Charlie, if you would have time to to get such a letter out tomorrow, we'd be happy to facilitate that if that's
Yeah, but let's, we'll talk about that after the meeting, and and uh I may, I may push Ms. Jacobs a little bit for her help as well, she's always helpful. So anyway, uh, thank you.
Happy to do.
Makes sense, yeah, makes sense. All right, a- anyone have anything else? If not, I appreciate.
Are we having, are we having a Zoom meeting or a live meeting with council?
Zoom, I believe, correct, Chris?
The mayor has said Zoom. All the council committees are still meeting by Zoom. It's only when it's the full council, not that we won't possibly have the full in our workshop, but the logistics are still tough for them to to do other meetings beyond just the council meetings.
And and two o'clock, why Zoom may be easier for a lot of folks right now, anyway. I mean, everybody's all over the place, so.
And they're going to have a special council meeting probably after our meeting, so probably three thirty, four o'clock. They're going to have to go off to a special short agenda council meeting, so just FYI.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I appreciate everyone's time. We've had several extra meetings on this, and I think it was well worthwhile. So thank everyone for your time, and y'all have a good evening and a good week, rest of your week.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie.